Okay, are you all ready? Okay. Well, welcome to our city council meeting this evening. It's good to have you here on this blustery rainy evening. And tonight's meeting is a consolidated meeting of the city council, the community development commission or redevelopment, and also our Bueno sanitation district. We'll begin by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Thank you very much. We're very privileged tonight to have Command Chaplain Christopher Ameris of the Camp Pendleton Naval Hospital here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and also the invocation. So if you'd all please stand and then remain standing for the invocation.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd join me in a moment of prayer. Lord Winston Churchill said, "A fanatic is someone who won't change his mind and won't change the subject." The art of governing demands gifts of persuasion and compromise, care for the common good and for the common concern. Let each one of us tonight be led by a noble spirit and a selfless heart so that the views expressed and the decisions reached will serve the needs of all the citizens of our fair city. Amen.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out this evening. Okay. Next we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any items that need to be added or deleted from the agenda?
There are no additions or deletions, Mayor.
We're very pleased to have with us tonight Troop 799, Boy Scouts of America, here. I think they're fulfilling partial requirements for the citizenship in the community merit badge, so it's good to have you with us. We did have a closed session prior to this meeting, and I'll ask the city attorney to give us a brief report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council met in closed session on items CS 1 and 2 on this evening's closed session agenda. No actions were taken that are required to be reported at this time.
Thank you. Under presentations, we have a presentation on the trauma intervention program, TIP, and that will be by Catherine Venable. And we're happy to have you with us, and the time is yours.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for allowing us to come and present. I do offer apology for our executive director, Mandy Adkinsen. She is very ill this evening and asked me to step in for her. We just wanted to come in and just give an overview about trauma intervention programs and what we've been doing in your community. We are coming into our 25th year of service within San Diego County. And we were established in 1985 by Wayne Fortin, and they found that there was a need for immediate service and immediate care and counsel on traumatic incidents within the community. So we are part of the 911 emergency response system, and we are partnered with the City of Vista and the fire department and the sheriff's department. We do respond to calls that we are requested to come to, and we are the immediate emotional and practical support so that law enforcement, fire departments, and also our hospital personnel, we do also respond to Tri-City Hospital. So those personnel can carry on and do their jobs. And we do respond 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, just like the 911 emergency response system does. Since in, I'm sorry, excuse me, in 2009, TIP provided service to more than 3,400 people in the county of San Diego, and we assisted over 3,300 emergency responders throughout the county. And in our last 25 years of service, we've responded to, we've provided service to more than 75,000 residents of the county and over 73,000 emergency responders that we've assisted with what we do. And we're an effective tool that is used by emergency responders. I'm sure if there were any here, if we would have had somebody come in, they would definitely let you know that we are appreciated in the community. And we really want to thank you and thank the city for continuing to partner with us and have our services available within the community to help our citizens. So, and we wanted to, we did bring, send materials through and wanted to allow you to ask out any questions about our program that you may have.
But just a statement, when you were talking about emergency responders within the building, there's a number of them sitting back there, and as you were talking, they're all shaking their heads that, yes, you are doing a good job. And so I just want to thank you for everything you do and all the members of your TIP program.
Oh, you're welcome. It's, we do feel it's such a vital, important service that we do provide and, you know, being able to stop what we call a secondary injury where there's a lot of victims that will, you know, come back and say, "Oh, the police didn't respond," or "The fire department, it took them five hours to get to my house, and it took them five minutes," you know. And we're able to be there and explain to people that, no, realistically, you know, let's take you back. So we're able to help people see the reality and move them on to the next step. So we did just want to take that time, and again, thank you very much for letting us...
Thank you. Years ago, my mother was driving down East Vista Way, and there was a gentleman who crossed the street, kind of intoxicated, and my mother hit him and went through her windshield. And talk about trauma, my mother, you had someone come out immediately. They had someone there right away because you just basically lost it there, you've seen the man there, and so, you know, your organization is a good organization. They helped my mother, and I think you've done a great job. Thank you, I'm glad you're there.
Thank you. And we do have an average response time within the community of 20 minutes to a scene, once we're dispatched, we're there within 20 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next part of our agenda is the consent calendar. These are items on the agenda that can be handled with one vote for each item, and that would be items C1 through C5. Are there any of those that the council would like to remove from the consent calendar? Okay, I don't have any from the audience, so why don't you, someone make a motion?
Move for adoption.
Okay, and do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so if you'd all please cast your votes. Thank you, and the voting on the consent calendar is unanimous. We'll next go to the items that are on discussion. First is the fiscal year 2010-2011 traffic signal priority list. Mr. Pierce.
Good, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Larry Pierce, I'm the city engineer, and we have with us our traffic engineer, Sam Hessedon, and he will be making the presentation for you. Good evening.
Evening. We have before you the proposed fiscal year 2010-11 traffic signal priority list, and it is based off of the current list, which was last approved in 2007, so this is an update of that. So what we've done is we collected new data between last year and this year for most of the locations that are on the current list, and we've gone and we evaluated based on the fresh data, and we've determined that 19 intersections met the established standards for traffic signals. The next step was to prioritize the intersections that qualified, and it's used in a system that we've used for many years based on Professional Traffic Engineers Society, and the system considers traffic volumes, accidents, traffic progression along the arterial street, presence of schools, pedestrian volumes, as well as other physical conditions. And considering the priority scores from the priority system that we use, as well as assessment of the need and benefit, we recommended three intersections. Actually, initially, we recommended four when we went to the traffic commission. One of the intersections was not recommended by the traffic commission, which is Bobear and Gidwin, so based on their recommendation, that leaves three intersections for recommendations at this point, and those are North Melrose Drive and West Los Angeles Drive/Highland Drive. Second is East Vista Way and Taylor Street, and third leaves Emerald Drive at Date Street. This is sort of just a synopsis, kind of a quick summary of the highlights of the factors that made these intersections qualify and put them at the top of the list. We, if you look at the intersection of North Melrose and West Los Angeles, the ranking score was actually 30 points. Collisions, it had a total of four collisions in a recent three-year period, and this is a type of collision that would be susceptible to the correction by the installation of a traffic signal. The main street volume during one peak hour was 2,178 cars, and during the same hour, the side street had 296 cars. East Vista Way at Taylor scored 18 points. It had three collisions in the same three-year period. The main street volume during the peak hour was 1779, and the side street was 207. Emerald Drive at Date Street scored 15 points. It had four collisions, and the main street volume, also 1779, and the side street volume for the same peak hour was 136.
Those were the exact same numbers for that, the volume, exactly the same numbers for the volume?
Yes. It's, the numbers looked correct from the counts. These are actual counts that we, you know, the equipment that we put out there, I think they just happen to be the same.
Wow.
From knowing, you know, the area and looking at other hours, the volumes do look correct. I think they just happen to be the same number. This is just an overall map of the intersections that qualified, as well as the ones recommended.
Are all the dots on there, are those lights, the little dots?
The little dots are...
The blue dots?
Those are existing traffic signals, correct.
Traffic signals?
Yes, the little ones, the little circles.
Okay.
We do have our share.
This is a little more detail on each of the recommended three intersections. This is just an aerial photo of Los Angeles at, or I'm sorry, Melrose at Los Angeles/Highland. It's an offset intersection. If a signal is to be designed and installed there, it would be one signal controlling both of these offset side streets. This is a picture looking northbound on Melrose towards Highland Drive. Los Angeles would be, actually Highland would be there on the left, and Los Angeles further up on the right. This is looking southbound on Melrose, and Los Angeles would be on the left, Highland would be further down on the right.
How do you do an offset signal like that when the two streets don't match up like that?
Yeah, you basically design a signal. Go back here, you would have...
So go in the middle like that?
No. No, you would have indications for each of the streets separately, but it would be controlled by one controller, and they would be synced so that exactly the greens, yellows, and reds would be displayed at the same time for the traffic on Melrose.
So two different signals?
Well, it's...
One at each street, one at each street, but...
Yeah, they would have their own indications, but they work exactly at the same time, so that when the traffic is allowed out of Los Angeles and Highland, traffic in Melrose would be stopped in both directions. Let's see, this is another picture looking southbound from Los Angeles toward Highland. This is a picture looking southbound on Melrose toward Los Angeles Drive. The next intersection is East Vista Way at Taylor, and that's an aerial photo of the intersection that shows that, you know, it's unimproved at this point, that it's only one lane each direction, there's no curb gutter or sidewalk. This is a picture looking northbound on East Vista Way towards Taylor. There's a left turn pocket there. This is looking southbound the other direction on East Vista Way towards Taylor, and you can see on the right there's cars lined up waiting to make a left turn out of Taylor Street. This is just another picture looking southbound also on East Vista Way towards Taylor. This is a picture looking westbound from Taylor onto East Vista Way. The next intersection is Emerald and Date, and...
Excuse me, Mayor. Do you want to do it now? Okay, go ahead. Back, go back, right there. Can you show aerial? Right there where that restaurant is on the top right, where the sidewalk is, is that the, is that going to be the width that the road's going to be, or is that going to be a wider road, or what's your plan there?
On East, on Taylor Street itself where the sidewalk exists?
Well, let's say on Tay, well, on the right-hand side, that would be, is that Taylor too?
Yes, that's correct.
Does that cross over?
Yes.
Okay, so where that restaurant is at top right, you have like a sidewalk, looks like it's, is that going to be, where the sidewalk is going to, is it going to stay there?
It'll stay on that side, yeah. It'll stay at that location.
Don't take any property away, widen that street either side?
Right. And it will be actually, the green piece that you see a little farther to the right at the edge of the screen, that is the piece of property that we bought a few years ago for the extension of the public services yard, and we'll be doing an expansion of the roadway at that point.
Well, actually, it'll come down.
It'll go south.
Go south, yeah.
Yes, it'll be widened to the south. As well as the entire intersection, all four corners of the intersection will also be improved.
So when you, do you anticipate this happening?
Well, we have money in our accounts for traffic signal impact fees, and if they're approved tonight, we'll start the design. I would say probably within a year from now, we would be ready to construct.
Now, how about all the overhead wiring there? What's going to happen? Is that going to stay there, or we...
Yes.
What's your plan for that?
No, there's not a plan. Those overhead lines would stay.
They'll stay?
Yes.
And you can work around them?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you say these proposed signals are going to, you're going to go ahead and design them and construct them? You've got a whole list here of traffic signals that are unfunded, traffic signals that have higher priority lists, I mean, have higher points than those that, those three there. Don't, won't these three go down there and be listed in that list of unfunded signals?
That's what we're asking for permission to include these in the next CIP, these three.
Why would this one here, these two that you're saying have 18 points, and you have one down here unfunded, that, oh, this...
Foothill and Oak is at a 23 rating?
I mean, because you're not going to do the one, good one, and the one Oak is you're already doing.
Right.
Okay, good, that's fine.
That Foothill and Oak, that's a different one from East Vista Way. This one has an always stop existing that is functioning...
This is at Foothill and Oak? You're not going to do that, are you?
No, that's why it's unfunded. We're not recommending that.
It's got higher point rating than the one that you're going to fund.
That's right. Because it's operating, the 80, the average daily traffic on each one of the legs is equal, so the four-way stop sign still works right now in that location.
On Oak.
On Oak and Foothill.
Okay.
Okay.
Emerald and Date, the east side of this Emerald is improved, the west side is not. And this one, actually, we are recommending for design only at this point, to be included if approved tonight, would be a part of the CIP for design only.
Emerald and Date?
That's right.
Okay.
This is a picture looking northbound from Emerald toward Date Street.
Mr. Lopez, did you have another question?
No.
This is looking the other way, looking southbound from Emerald towards Date, and this is if you're on, on Date, the west side of it, looking northbound onto Emerald. And this is looking southbound, also from the same direction, from the same leg of the intersection on Date looking towards Emerald. So the recommendation tonight would be to approve the proposed fiscal year 2010-11 traffic signal priority list.
Okay, are there any other comments from the council? Do you have a motion?
Move recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. If there are no, I'm sorry, Mr. Rockey, did you have a question?
I did, just a couple.
Go ahead, go ahead.
When you, when you propose these slides, it's just the same as what you've done with the rest of the city, because it seems like now you're letting the major arteries flow and allowing for them to stack along the sides coming in, it's just the same process.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to comment that I think really that North Melrose is already needed because that is a speedway, and there's a couple of schools right there, and I know kids cross those streets to their, you know, to their own threat. And I do want to talk about the Taylor one, I'm sorry, I should have spoke earlier, but the Taylor one, you know, and I think Mr. Lopez brought it up, you're going from two lanes down to one lane in that area, and it just seems like a real mess. Is there some way to address that while you're doing this lighting too, you know? You talked about maintaining the, and improving the walkway, but is there some way you can improve the street so that, okay, go ahead, it looks like you should...
This project actually proposes to widen 200 feet to the north, to the ultimate width that accommodates four lanes, and then we would transition again back to the one lane. So this one project, actually, that's what we've scoped it for, so that it approves Taylor Street 200 feet each direction, as well as East Vista Way.
So be four lanes through the intersection?
That's right.
Okay, good, good, good. Well, I tell you, talk about a major bottleneck going out of town on Vista Way through that intersection, what a mess.
Yeah. Okay, if there are no other questions, then please cast your vote. Okay, and that item has passed unanimously. Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is discussion item two, and that's the Supplemental Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. And Mr. Rollins?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Bill Rollins, Director of Redevelopment and Housing, and tonight, management analyst Bill Crane has a short presentation on this item.
Good evening, Chairman Vance and Commission members. In the early 1990s, the state of California faced significant budget deficits and created the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, or ERAF, mechanism to shift property taxes from local governments back to schools, thereby freeing up the same amount in the state general fund to be used for other purposes. Since the creation of ERAF, the state has periodically shifted funds away from redevelopment agencies. To date, Vista's redevelopment agency has lost nearly 2.6 million to ERAF shifts. As part of the state's budget package for the current fiscal year, legislation was passed requiring California's redevelopment agencies to participate in the shift of 1.7 billion in the current fiscal year and 350 million in fiscal year 2010-11 to the Supplemental Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, or CRF, in a process similar to prior ERAF shifts. Vista's potential CRF payment in the current fiscal year is approximately 5.4 million. Next year, the CRF payment is estimated to be 1.1 million. The CDC will be required to make these CRF payments if the California Redevelopment Association, which filed a lawsuit in October 2009 on behalf of the state's redevelopment agencies, is not able to obtain a judgment declaring the implementing language unconstitutional and enjoining its enforcement prior to the May 10 deadline for payment. If the CRF payment is required, staff recommends the payment be made by a loan from the low and moderate income housing fund balance. This recommendation is based on the fact that there are sufficient funds available from this source while retaining funds to carry out various housing projects, and payment from the redevelopment funding sources is not viable as current contract and loan obligations to be drawn on the funds in the coming months fully commit these funding sources. If the loan from the low and moderate income housing fund balance is approved, the statute requires that it be repaid by June 30, 2015. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
We have one person that's requested to speak on this item. Would you like to hear from him first?
Yes.
Okay, Michael Booth?
This situation is interesting to me in that it's a tug of war between the state and the city. The city's money is being taken by the state to fund education, taken from redevelopment. The priorities of the state are correct. Education should be a higher priority than redevelopment. Of course, we oppose the idea that it's our money that the state is taking, and if we can get it back through legal process, that's great. But I think in the future, these future years, no matter what we have going on in the city, the state is not going to live up to its obligation. It's basically defaulting on education. If you see the cutbacks, they're draconian cutbacks in our school district. We, as a community, can't be successful without successful schools. So even though redevelopment is, it's our money, and we should be able to spend it the way we want, I think the priority should be to consider the fact that we, in the future, are going to have to supplement what the schools are getting to keep our schools healthy. It's a tug of war, but I think the city should be prepared, and is the city prepared, to shoulder some of the burden of education of our children when the state defaults?
Mr. Booth, the state of California is not taking the money to give to the schools. What they're doing is shifting it to, so that that redevelopment money goes back to them to pay for their inability to pay for schools, or their unwillingness to pay for their obligation of the schools. So what they're doing is they're taking our redevelopment money to pay for their obligation.
Right, I understand.
And that's, that has nothing to do with us and the school district. What the state needs to do is to change some of their priorities and stop spending so doggone much money on things that they can cut back on and not take our money to fund their obligation with the school district.
But our schools are very important to us, probably more important than anything else in the community.
But that's, under state law, they have the obligation to pay for that. We don't have that obligation.
Exactly. We don't have that obligation to the state. That's the state obligation. However, if the state does not live up to that obligation, it's our community.
Yeah, but don't you think the state should, I think you're addressing the wrong body. I think you ought to be addressing the state, telling them, maybe they ought to cut back on some of the programs that they have, which they have not done heretofore. They continually outspend their revenue sources, and then without, when they outspend their revenue sources, then they leave it up, us, leave it up to us to make up the difference.
I would like to see the city be prepared to shoulder the burden of a state... I would like to see the city be prepared to shoulder the burden of a state.
The city has always, always shouldered that burden. Whenever the state has taken our money, we've always given it, not willingly, but we don't have a choice. We have to give it. And that's, you talk about a tug-of-war, there's no tug-of-war. They say, "We're going to take it," and we take it. That's, a tug-of-war is when you've got two people pulling the same end. We never get a chance to pull.
Well, tug-of-war, you're going back to, you're going to court to try to get the money back.
We're going to court to try to keep them from taking our money.
Right.
And use their own funds to cover their obligation.
Absolutely. And they should, but if they don't, remember, they're our kids going to our school district.
They're our kids, but we've contributed heavily to our kids over a number of years, and I think it's time the school, for the state, to meet their obligations.
I agree with you, the state should.
So I hope you're contacting your state representative and telling him that to keep his hands off our money. We would greatly appreciate that, and the city manager's just chomping at the bit to say something.
No, I'd just like to add, the biggest issue is, is that most cities would not mind, I mean, it still would be a burden, if the state were taking the monies to supplement to the schools what they already give. But what they do is they supplant the funds, the money that they're supposed to give, they don't supplement it. If they were taking monies from redevelopment and City's General Fund to give to schools to supplement what their obligation is, that would not be so onerous and distasteful. But what they do is they don't meet their obligation as it is to schools, and then they backfill their own general fund with our money and say it's for education, but it's not. They never give it to the schools. So that's the problem. So it's not a supplement to their funds, it's a supplanting for their own general fund spending.
Yes, it goes into the same pot.
No, it goes into a different pot, it doesn't go to schools, that's the problem.
Okay.
If we were giving to the schools, it wouldn't.
That would be different.
It'd be different. But we're not, we're having to have it stolen from us, and it just goes to the state.
Well, based on what I see with the state's treatment of our school districts, I think the city should be prepared to help our school districts, help our children. There's nothing more important to the city than the school district. And whenever there's a partnership possible or an assist to help our educational system, that should be top priority.
Well, that's well and good, but then when it comes time for us to provide services that some citizens feel are equally important as a school district, like paying for police and public safety. That's, when they take our general fund money, that's what we also use for that. And so I think that if, like I say, like the city manager said, if we were trying to help out, that would be fine, but we're not, we're giving all.
Well.
It's a total contribution for us.
They're, yeah, they're taking our money and putting it into the state, getting it, taking it. If the state is not going to support our schools, are we? Are we going to step up?
And vote.
Are we prepared to?
I don't think that's the question, but okay, very good. Thank you very much for your comments, we appreciate it. Any, Mr. Lopez, do you have a comment?
The school budget is a heck of a lot bigger than ours, isn't it? A truth, Rita?
Yes, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, quite a bit, quite a bit bigger budget over there than here. You know, so it's hard for us to be giving anybody money like that.
But I don't think any of us really begrudge the school district getting money, it's not that, it's the state that I begrudge giving the money to. If they would do the same things that we've had to do in terms of reducing staff and reducing expenditures, then I would feel like, well, maybe I'm willing to share. But they do absolutely nothing. Okay, Mr. Grunkie?
I might just want to comment what Mr. Lopez just brought up, that yes, the Vista Unified Schools does have a larger budget, but also has a larger obligation to reduce right now. I think they have $18 million deficit right now, so they're trying to deal with that. And that's, again, due to the state takings. You said that we were going to loan them money and pay it back by 2015, and who would pay it back?
The money would, the loan would be paid back to the housing fund, from the redevelopment fund.
Gotcha, okay. So that tax increment that we get would be utilized to pay it back, then?
It certainly could be, yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Campbell?
Well, that's where I was going, just to make sure I fully understood the fact that there's nothing in here that I see the state is going obligated to pay us back. So, and considering that two weeks ago, they had a $20 billion deficit going forward in their budget, and it's now upwards of 21, 22 billion.
And how many years has this gone on?
Well, it's just reprint, sir, from last year, it's just, here we go again. So we fully understand, we don't expect to ever see this money again. Is that true?
Absolutely, our plan envisions no repayment from the state.
So we just pedal faster and regenerated ourselves so they can take it again? And there's no limitation on their taking it whenever they choose, is that true?
Yes.
That's wonderful, that just is so hard.
He seems unhappy, isn't he?
All right, any more comments on this?
Yeah, I would like.
I have comments, but, yeah, let's get going.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to ask the attorney if we can make this motion with prejudice.
You can certainly make it with reluctance.
It's not as strong as prejudice. With reluctance, I would make.
Under duress.
Under duress, and reluctantly make the motion.
I'll double the duress.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Next, we have no public hearings this evening, so the next we go to oral communications, and that would be Mickey Vukovich. Am I, did I pronounce that correctly? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Mickey Vukovich, 1203 Activity Drive in Vista. I am Executive Director of the Tony Hawk Foundation. I addressed your body back in December, when we were discussing the proposed skate park project at the new flood basin. At the time, the council chose not to support that location. In the interim, we've had the holiday break, and I just wanted to come tonight to present a few documents that I think might be of help to you, some data and research that our organization has done, and just also to remind you of the urgent need for a skate park in Vista, since the previous park had been removed, and the approximately 4,600 skateboarders in Vista are now left to skate in the streets and find their own places to ride. I'm sure you've heard from other members of the community over the time, but our organization, which is a national organization that has assisted over 444 different communities to help them build free public skate parks, we're certainly here as a resource for you. And I have, in the last couple of years, met with various city staff and recreation staff to initially try and resolve some of the problems that were occurring at the old skate park, and certainly with our success in getting skate parks built and helping communities through the process, and to address some of the general concerns about the parks ahead of time, so that the problems such as those that occurred at the old skate park can be addressed upfront and avoided. So we are here as a resource for you and for your city staff, and again, just wanted to present some documents that I think might be of assistance in your deliberations and other communications with city staff about the future skate park project here in Vista.
Thank you very much. If you'd just give those to the city clerk, she'll make sure we all get a copy. That's the only oral communications that I have cards for, so we'll start with staff reports. Mr. Lopez?
Just one quick thing on this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Talking about the skateboard park, when we had it in front of us last time, we talked about the area, we're out there on the Frontage Road, we talked about, there used to be a skateboard park out there. I talked to the owner here last week about it, and there was a skateboard park there years ago, but they ripped it up with a D8 and left the concrete there and covered it up with some soil. So it was there, and the concrete's still there, and it was, we did have one there. So, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, it's your turn to give, oh, let's see, no, wait, I go, I'm sorry. Mr. City Attorney, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing this evening.
Mrs. Geldert?
Well, I'll take up the city attorney's time, if you don't mind. Thank you very much. Just wanted to give council an update on the Local Taxpayers Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act, which you've all heard of from the League and a variety of other groups, but it's going to protect local property tax revenues. When we're talking about revenues, we're talking about community redevelopment funds, Proposition 42 funds, and highway users' tax funds, public transit funding, and locally levy to taxes, such as parcel taxes, TOT, et cetera. The measure is currently gathering signatures to qualify for the November ballot. They need to gather about 1.1 million signatures to make sure that they have at least the 700,000 to qualify, and so volunteers across the state are undertaking this process. Californians have consistently voted in the past to stop the state from takes of local government and transportation funds, and still, for the 2009 and 10 fiscal year, the legislature passed a state budget that borrowed 2 billion in property taxes from local governments, took 2 billion in local redevelopment funds, and they shifted 910 million in transit funding away from local transit agencies. That's quite a bit of money that we could all use here locally. Makes it difficult for us to balance our budgets, as well as one of the reasons why we've moved away from the two-year budgeting process, because we don't know from year to year, or almost month to month, what our forecasting should be, along with the recession. Unfortunately, we hate to do the initiative process, because California's become an initiative state, we have so many on the books, it's difficult, but the ballot initiative process this year is even more onerous. There are currently 74 initiatives that have cleared the Attorney General's office and are in circulation, attempting to obtain enough signatures to send them to the November ballot. Imagine looking at our November ballot, along with all of our elections and legislature, governor, all of the officials we'll be voting for, along with that many types of measures. More than two dozen address the state-local government relationship. Four of them note that really seem to be gathering momentum are the California Forward Movement, which is gathering signatures for a measure to address the state and local fiscal relationship. Repair California's Initiative would call for a constitutional convention, although it'd be very interesting to be part of that, be like you're back in 1776, I'm not sure that California's ready for that. Citizens for California Reform, which would make the legislature part-time and cut their pay accordingly, that one may have a chance.
It's got a good chance.
It's got a good chance. Californians for Democracy would change the threshold for passing a state budget from 2/3rds to 50%. So those are pretty key, but we really urge you all to help and get at least signatures on, for the initiative forms for the Local Taxpayers and Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act. We think that that's very vital to protect some of those revenues that the state still can grab, get their hands on. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez? You're next.
This, the other day, a fine gentleman passed away, Dan Piro. I didn't know him real, real well, but I ran into him through the Boys and Girls Club, and once I got to know him, he was a great, great, great man, and he helped the youth there at the Boys and Girls Club tremendously, and very involved there, and there's a whole list of things that he did, but I will miss him, because we, I used to have some little good conversations about government, which, he really wasn't against government, he was just, you know, he had his mindset on certain ideas, and again, a great gentleman, and we'll miss him, I'll miss him anyway.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'd just echo what Mr. Lopez said, we'll surely miss a person who's given a lot back to the community. Just a comment back, tying into Mrs. Geldert's comments, this morning I made a presentation at Caltrans, an annual transportation report to the community, and already, North County Transit, over the last couple of years, has lost $31 million to the state raiding the transit funds. They've stopped all transit funding, as Mrs. Geldert said, and going forward, the next couple of years, we see another $50 million. Already, Metropolitan Transit's out $100 million, these are much larger than we, and they look at $200 more million going forward. As a result, they'll be cutting $7 million of Sunday service here, which prevents a lot of people from being able to get to their places of worship and other things that they might do on a weekend, so quality of life is being impaired. At the same time, the state is saying, well, you have to cut back on emissions. Well, certainly by cutting out transit, you're probably cutting out emissions of buses, but you're also forcing people back into their cars, and that's totally in opposite direction from where they're trying to go with SB 375 and AB 32, which require substantial cuts in air emissions going forward. So it's very contradictory, it's very frustrating, and there's no funding in order to do what they want us to do. So the League of Californians is collecting information from the various cities in the region, as to unfunded mandates that the state has foisted off on local jurisdictions and what that's cost, not only since 2002, but going forward a couple of years, so we can show to the state that they simply have to slow down in taking of our local funds in order to make up for their shortfalls, to be more accountable of what they do with the money they have available to them, and to leave us to do what we need to do, which is obviously public safety, good roads, sewers, things of that nature, which they're really impairing our ability to do going forward.
I think you're being kind when you say it's shortfalls, I think they're longfalls that the state's been.
Well, they are. Diane Harky came to the chamber dinner on Friday, and I think we all heard her say that her first words out of her mouth is the state of California is bankrupt, but unfortunately, since it's a specific government entity, it can't go bankrupt, but it is bankrupt. And she's a financial person who came from Dana Point, I believe, and served there for four years on a city council. Very disheartening.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritter?
I just would speak for all of us and say that our thoughts and condolences go to the family of the skateboarder that was killed recently, and also the one that was hit. I just, our prayers and thoughts are with them, and I know that it's a huge tragedy, and I just thought we would recognize that.
Okay, Mr. Grunkie?
First, I want to thank the chamber for the event that Mr. Campbell just referred to. We heard from Darrell Issa from the federal level, and then Ms. Harky from the state level, and Mr. Horn from the county level, and it appeared to me that the feds and the state do not have their act together financially. It's just a mess, just a mess. Kudos out to the county for coming in with AAA ratings on their bonds. I also want to say that I had a conversation with our city planner right before this meeting. It was my intention to bring a pilot program for solar panels to our city, as occurring in other cities like Carlsbad and Oceanside and so forth. This is a pilot program, and I think we'll ultimately have that program to our opportunity in the future. We just can't, we can't man it. We don't have the manpower within our city to take the extra time to put this pilot program in order, so I anticipate the opportunity when we'll have to be able to do this as a city in the future, but we're just going to have to pass right now, because we can't just man the program with any additional people. So, that's what I have to say, again, I really thought that was a very good, enlightening event with the chamber when it came to what our elected officials had to say about their own government and its lack of ability to show financial responsibility.
Okay, and I don't have anything more to add, you've all said it, so this meeting is adjourned.